I'll lead us in the first of the week. I pray to the Lord, in the United States of America, that your republic always extends honoration and justice for all.
Let's pray. To heaven and father, thank you again for this wonderful day. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of this town. We ask for your wisdom and guidance in everything we do. In the name of Jesus Christ, we ask. Amen. Now call the special meeting of 14 Tuesday. Permission to order.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna call Councilor Al Britton in.
Okay.
He's not gonna make it.
All right. Of course, everybody knows this is concerning the house all you neighbors live in over there. I think what we need to do first is if there's anybody in the audience that wants to make some comments before we get started on this any further? Anybody?
Hey, you're going live.
Nobody wants to say anything? And we've heard a lot before, but you know, if there's something you think we need to hear again, we'll be glad to let you speak.
Eric, will you pass that microphone? Yeah, true.
If you don't mind signing for me, if it states your name and address.
Just so everybody knows that Mr. Al Britton's on the telephone.
Hello, Russell?
My name is Stan Price. I represent 102, 104, 106, and 108 Monica Drive. And I've got a lot behind 108 Monica Drive on Ramsey Circle in the neighborhood that this house is in. I did sign a life estate to my mother for the one house on those only two houses on 104, which is across the street from the residence we're talking about. My wife and I are, we have a legal custody of a seven-year-old that we're raising. Since the hurricane, we've had my mother-in-law and father-in-law living with us in our house. And this is not an ongoing thing. It's just what my family is exposed to as far as the drugs, as far as the traffic, as far as the language, as far as the filth from the dogs. Right now, all the current residents are in jail for one reason or another. I think, I think, I think y'all know about all that. So, so we've got one person trying to move in, somebody that's in jail is having his stuff moved in, that when he gets out, he's supposed to move in over there. And I'm talking about everything from not being able to let, I own four lots on that street. And I can't let the seven-year-old out to play by herself because of the filthy language that comes from across the street. The dope, the dope business that comes and goes from across the street. My mother has witnessed at night, she has witnessed sexual activity in a lit window. For any Tom, Dick, and Harry to see that wants to ride, ride down the road or look out the window, they're right there in front of it. It's just, it's just, it's bad. When everybody got locked up, my concern was for the animals. I did walk through the house. The house was unlocked. I walked through the house to look to see if there was any animals in there. There was a sign of animals. It was atrocious. The inside of that house is atrocious. And, and we still got one dog unaccounted for. But he runs the neighborhood, but you can't get your hands on him. We don't know whether he's got rabies. We don't know whether, you know, distemper, whatever. We don't know what, we don't, none of the dogs has had any care. Bottom line is, is this, we, I say we, the city imposed penalties on this house at $250 a day for 30 days. That's $7,500. The city went over and cleaned this property up to bring it to comply with codes. Now that's all gone again. They're piling stuff up. I think, I think Justin's got photographs of what, of what the yard looks like now. Animal Control keeps coming around there trying to catch that last dog. It's, um...
No utilities?
The utilities, the utilities. They stole water from the city. They cut the lock off of the meter and turned the meter on. The city had to remove the meter and have to go by their regular duty check to see if it hadn't been remedied. They've also stole utilities from Duke Energy. They bypassed the meter and were stealing there. That's, that's one of the charges that one of them's locked up for. Theft of utilities. He didn't show up for court, so he's there for, for failure to appear. His court date, I understand, is April the 2nd. So, the problem I got with it is the taxpayers of this city has got the $7,500 worth of, of penalties. They got the cleanup. They hauled off two, they got two roll-off containers from Danny Tankersley to haul garbage out of there. The inmates couldn't do it. The inmate labor cannot be used on private property, so it was all city employees, taxpayers paid every dime of it. So I'm assuming that that bill that they owe the city is, is somewhere in the neighborhood of $10,000. Before they even, and plus, you know, the water, the overdue on the water, I'm assuming is, is $10,000 or better. There's nobody there that can have the water turned on. The house, when I walked through it looking for the dogs after everybody got locked up for the welfare of the animals, when I walked through there looking, looking through there, it's atrocious. It's feces, it's urine, you can't stand it. You can talk to your animal control officer, he's done the same thing. The house needs to be condemned. It is, it is, falls under the Florida statutes as a nuisance. And, and I expect the city to, you know, I've heard deadlines and deadlines and deadlines. Well, we're gonna give them this much time, we're gonna give them this much time, we're gonna give them this much time. The plan's over with. We backed off when the hurricane came because we knew the city and the county people had more on their plate than to worry about them knuckleheads over there at 103 Monica Drive. So we backed off and let the city do their thing with this state of emergency that we were in. Now we're gonna put our foot back on the throttle. And if it takes bringing an attorney in here and filing a suit against the city to get this, to get this house disposed of, evacuated, whatever it takes to get our neighborhood to where a child can play in the yard, to where my mother-in-law can walk the street, to where my mother can walk the street, to where my wife can come in, in the house, in and out of the house without having to be exposed to the filthy language and the, and the smells that come from that place over there. It's time, it's time to do something with it today. And, and we're not gonna stand for anything less. My next step is going to Tallahassee and hiring a lawyer and file suit against the city. It's been dragging on for years, not months, not days, not weeks. It's been, been going on for years. And, and quite frankly, I'm, I'm tired of paying the taxes that I pay on the five lots I've got in that subdivision and have to put up with, with the, with the filth and the, and the language and the activity and the, and the, what you, you can't allow your family out of the yard to see. So, bottom line is, I'm here to see y'all do something about it today, or I'm going to Tallahassee tomorrow. So that's just the way it's gonna be. And that's all I got.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Attorney?
I'm here.
Do you have anything to add that would help us legally condemn this house as a nuisance and unsafe house?
Mayor, with the threats of litigation coming from the public with this matter involving litigation, I'm going to advise the board not to discuss strategy about this, but I had, yesterday I did send to all board members two options. One that I made a recommendation for and one I did not recommend, but obviously it's within the purview of the board. But if we discuss what I, what you and I and the rest of the board discuss as far as legal options, then we breach attorney's right and privilege, and that would be problematic for us from all parties.
So, what are you saying? We should do it this time legally?
My recommendation is that we bring this before the magistrate, ask magistrate order that the house be condemned, allow the city to demolish the house and order a vacating of all residents. To do it unilaterally would be fraught with problems. You cannot bring back this house if you unilaterally knock it down without ensuring all procedural steps are checked and double-checked. So the exposure to the city would be significant if there was ever a problem in the future with any of the procedural steps taken by the city.
Okay. Any, any of you that have anything?
I'd like to say, let me start off by saying that the city, in my opinion, and I'm speaking on myself as well, I don't believe we've done what we should have done. So I apologize for that. And now we gotta figure out how do we make it right? I've spoke to a few of you already. What I did find out this morning was, I took the time to read the ordinance that we have. We have a nuisance ordinance, and we've had it for probably a long, long time. So it kinda gets under my skin to find out that we've had the teeth to solve the problem, but we really didn't use it. So, you know, I'll on up to that. So, in the nuisance, it actually says that if you follow the certain steps between the city clerk and the city staff, you can mandate that they vacate the house, you can demolish the house, or remove the items there on the lot. My major concern is making sure that the person we assume owns the house, does indeed own the house, has legal ownership of the home. There seems to be some question as to who has ownership of the house. But what I'd like to do is ask the people that are here representing the neighborhood, what is, what is your feelings if we instructed the attorney and our staff to start doing what we should have done, and that is follow the language of our nuisance policy? And that is, we move towards vacating the people. Obviously, the people have to be out first before we can tear down the building. So, what is your feeling? Do you feel like that we would be doing what we should have been doing then? Or is it too late for us to do that now? And, and you want us to just move toward demolishing the house?
We want to condemn today.
You know, that, and that's what we're at. And as the city, it's almost like if we go and we tear the house down tomorrow, we force the people out, well, we're gonna get sued by whoever then comes forward and says, well, that wasn't even their house, it's my house. Because the lady that passed away is the one that had the house. She was, it's my understanding, she owns it, the estate owns it. So, you know, we're in a position where we're gonna get, we probably get sued either by the original and true owners of the domicile, or we get sued by the people that are upset because we haven't done anything till this point. So my question to you is, is there any room to do what we should do and should have done? And that is to, I understand they have till Friday to do certain things. When they would post it, code enforcement posted a, an order more or less that says if you don't do the certain things, and there's no way those things will be done by Friday, I believe, and Adam can weigh in on this, then it would open us up to moving forward with considering the house inhabitable, unsafe, and then we could make force a vacate. But we can't do that until we have the legal authority to do it.
You can do it. You can vote today on doing it.
What's the start from filing the lien? That, that property owns the city so much money. What's the problem with, the city should have already filed a lien?
Yeah, we have liens filed.
And then turn around and foreclose on the lien, and then the city, the house belongs to the city. That's it, done, been done.
I agree. My question is, are you willing to give us the time to do what you just explained?
You have the time.
We have the time. Thirty days and let the attorney look into it and we got nowhere.
It's not picking up with them staying here.
Y'all, we'll have to come up front.
Just get them to come up one at a time.
Chris Brumball, 107 Monica Drive. Has anybody checked the tax records on this house? Has, has taxes been paid to the city on this house?
I heard someone say they had not been paid.
Has the county taxes been paid on this house? Why haven't y'all checked into that? It might be in probate already. In November, I came to this, well, several times. I brought up that nuisance order. I read said three things that they were in violation of then. We'd be dealing with this crap before the hurricane. We're dealing with this crap after the hurricane. We're dealing with this crap after we back to y'all. It's a simple thing. You can get on the computer program and move the house, or go out there and precipitate probate. Y'all saying up here, we don't know who owns the house. We don't check on it. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
The bottom line is, y'all can vote on it today. Y'all are here to represent us, not somebody who don't pay the taxes. Mr. Al Britton's advising y'all, but y'all work for us, so, I mean, at some point, we gotta quit passing the buck along to somebody else, man up and make a decision. So, we want to condemn today for sure, but...
I agree with you. I mean, I fully do. Y'all have put up with a lot for a long time.
Right.
A lot for a long time, and, you know, you shouldn't have to put up with that. And it should be something we should have already done. I'm kind of appalled that nobody here says they know who owns the house. As much trouble as we've had with this house, we would think that it was fully researched to see who owns the house, have they been paying taxes? And we would know that, but nobody can tell you that today, and I'm ashamed of that. I'm completely ashamed that we can't answer that question.
The tax certificate's been sold multiple times since 98, 99. So obviously whoever owns the house or is getting the house in the state has nothing for the house.
So somebody, somebody does hold a tax certificate?
Yeah, there's multiple tax certificates held, seven years on the site. This year, nobody's bought it. So if somebody's really interested in the house, they would already taken action to get it back, condemn the house, push it over. Y'all got the right to do it. It's just if you, it's just if you have to, to do it or not. But, I mean, right now, we're at a point, they're in jail. Legally, nobody has a right to live there. Now's the time to do it. So, I mean, you can go by Mr. Al Britton's recommendations, and we can go another 30 days and let him look into it, and we'll be back in the same boat. Or, you know, y'all can do what you know is right. If we get rid of the house and whoever owns is supposed to get the property, if they wanna come back, they can get the property then. But we wanna do it away with the house. I mean, I've been fighting rats, roaches, contrary to what the health department says it is, a health risk. So, I mean, I appreciate y'all having this meeting today, but this is end of the road. So you can either take your chance with them suing you or us, so...
That's fair enough.
I want somebody else coming up. I just wanna talk a bit. I spoke to Justin McCrone. I've spoken to him several times. And I think what has happened is, we have dropped the ball during the storm. Everybody was a little bit lax, like Stan you mentioned. He took the pressure off of us, and we should have still been pursuing the issue. I've personally seen those pictures of what you've seen with animal feces everywhere. I mean, it just, it's unbelievable. And I, I'd probably be in your footsteps right now in front of me if, if it was me living there. And I fully understand where you guys are coming from.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, my family has the right to utilize my property, our property. The property that we pay taxes on, property that we pay water bill, we pay the sewage bill, we pay my, we got the right to use that yard. If we wanna go outside and barbecue in the yard, we ought to have the right to do that without being subjected to that trash. Now, I'm also appalled, as the mayor is, about nobody sitting on this board knows the legalities of who owns his house. However, there is no water, there's no electricity, and Public Works, once they ballooned this... Mr. Brumball came up here one day and wanted to know why they could go steal water from the soccer field and bring it up here by the wagon loads and utilize the sewer for free when we gotta pay to use the sewer. So they ballooned the sewer to stop the sewer from flowing. Well, those knuckleheads just went in there and took the balloon out of the sewer pipe just like they took the lock off of the water meter and started stealing water. Now they're still using the sewer. So Public Works went in there and took a three-foot section of sewer line out. So you tell me today how somebody can come out of jail, move into that house, and have no possible way on God's green earth to flush a toilet? What are you doing with your body waste? Call your animal control man in here. He towed it dead dogs out of the house. Where does the body wa, where's the, where's the waste go from the dogs? You don't just pick it up and flush it like you would a house pet. You don't flush it. So you pack it up in these black bags and you put it outside of the road, and the hurricane people keep picking, 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 picking. They picking up body waste, they're not picking up hurricane waste. They're picking up body waste, intentionally put it in, in black bags and put it out on the right-of-way. And as long as these female trucks will run around picking up trash, they're picking that up. There's no possible way for you to move into that house and draw you a glass of water, turn a light on, flush a toilet, or anything else. So you gonna tell me there's three people gonna live there that's creating body waste, and you tell me where that body waste is going? Besides being buried in the neighborhood, besides being hauled to the woods, besides something illegally happening to get rid of body waste? You cannot legally sit in that house and urinate and flush that toilet. The toilets will not flush in the house because Public Works, John Grantland told me they took a three-foot section of pipe out on the, on the city right-of-way. Because they came in and took the balloon out that they did, that they put in there to block the, to block the pipe. And so they took the balloon out, so they just cut in, went in there, cut a three-foot section of pipe out, capped it on the sewer side, I mean, on the city side. And then, so, so what are we doing? Tell me how somebody can legally live in that filth and continue to create filth and no way to dispose of it. They don't have garbage pickup? Waste management will not give them a garbage can because they're soaked, they're in, they're in arrears with the city on the, on the water bill. Their pass due, they gotta pass due water bill. They, the city owns this house at this point. They've got a $7,500 fine imposed on it that's owed to the city. They've got a cleanup fee that's owed to the city. They've got a pass due water bill that's owed to the city. And they've got a lawsuit right now with Duke Energy because they bypassed their meter and were stealing utilities there. That's what some of the lawsuits, that's what some of them's locked up for now. But the bottom line is, there's no, all it is, is a concrete tent. We got, we got primitive camping in a concrete building in our neighborhood, and we want it stopped. Bottom line...
Let me ask this. According to the email from our attorney, option one is, he states operating under the initial order of the magistrate. The city is authorized to take any reasonable action to abate the nuisance and eliminate public health hazards at the property. An argument could be made that this could include demolition of the home due to the ongoing nature of the nuisance, which you just described. And he goes on to say it would be problematic for the attorney to, to argue that option, but I, I believe it's time to make an action and move forward. I'll make a motion that we accept option one of our city attorney, and that we start to date the process of vacating the home and demolishing the house.
Mr. Hoffman, I'll second that with a little discussion.
Hoffman, second. First question. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, just again, I completely understand where you're coming from. We've heard today that we were gonna have a suit against us. So we're liable to have two suits at one time on this one issue because at some point we'll have to do something.
Yeah.
But, and if, if we're unified here and we get a 4-0 vote, I'm for it, and I'd like to hear from you guys if, if y'all are gonna vote for it.
Yeah, I'm for it. I wanna apologize. I've been on board for a year and a half, year and a few months, and Mr. Brumball has came and, and, and spoke about these things. I know how important it is to spend time with your family, and when you go outside, you don't want all that distraction across the street. Believe me, I know. I've grown up in areas where people are cursing and you don't want your kids around it. So I really understand what you're, what you're going through. And I'm for moving forward with, we have to condemn it and then come back and demolish it or whatever. Let's, let's go ahead and do what we have to do to make that neighborhood the neighborhood that it was before. Then start trashing it with this, with this trailer or whatever, whatever kind of...
It's a block structure. Bottom line is, what I would like to see, if we're gonna make a move on top, starting what y'all just said, y'all was gonna support and start, let's go ahead and make a no entry. Let's don't get no more, let's don't get no more vagrants in there. Let's don't get no more vagrants. I'm tired of deadlines. I've heard deadline after deadline after deadline. And I, like I said, we pulled, we stepped off, we stepped off the gas pedal when the hurricane came, because we knew you guys played, was loaded. So we all stepped off the gas pedal. But it was going on a long time before that. But I don't want any more activity in that house right there until that attorney tells us, gives us okay to get a backhoe over there and tear that mess up. Because I do not want, we condemn it, we can condemn it today. You can call your animal control officer, and he's walked through it several times looking for that one last dog. That one last dog, there was 12 dumped out on, on industrial road, two of which got run over. There was nine picked up by animal control, and there's one still loose in the neighborhood. And we don't know whether they got distemper, we don't know whether they got rabies, we don't, because if they won't pay a water bill, they're not gonna pay a vet bill. So the bottom line is, we still got one dog. Animal Control is working diligently, coming by there every day, hunting that dog, trying to get that dog, trying to get that dog. My mother sees the dog, and, and her concern is for the dog. The people make their own choices. The dogs are victims. So she tries to make sure that dog has something, it won't come up to nobody because it's been mistreated. But the bottom line is, is this, we've gotta do something today to stop any more vagrants from coming in and moving into this concrete primitive tent that we've got over there that the smell, all the floor cover's gone and the, and the smell is just soaked into the concrete floor to where you can't even, you can't even walk in the place. Me, out of, out of my concern for the dogs, I went and looked in for the dogs. I looked for the dogs. When everybody got locked up, I said, there's dogs over there. I sent dog food over there before, when they didn't have food to feed the dogs. But the bottom line is, is I went over there and you can't live in that house. You can't, if, there's nothing in there, there's nothing in there that you can live in. It's, it's a concrete tent, primitive camping, and we need it to stay vacated and get it condemned and get it gone.
Mr. Mayor, at the county meeting this morning, county guys had instructed administrator Mr. Hammond to work with Mr. Anderson on how we need to follow up on this issue. Mr. Hammond to work with Mr. Anderson on how we need to follow up on this issue. They've heard about it on their end as well.
And I'm in full agreement with everybody else on this board. This house needs to go. I understand we may have some litigation over it, but the house needs to go.
We'll have litigation on our iron end if y'all do give y'all.
Man, I was talking about the litigation, getting the house tore down, is what I was referring to, but I would like for you to hold off a little bit of time.
If I'm getting what I want right here in this building today, I will hold off. I don't have no problem with none of y'all, I support every one of y'all. I just want y'all to support us.
I'd just like to say this, with all due respect, Mr. Mayor, the litigation on whoever owns that house, I'd rather face that and go through that than to, we have taxpayers that pay their taxes, then they have to go through some type of litigation with them. I favor them over whoever owns the house, they should have been taking care of it. We have all these liens on it. So the litigation with, for us to hold on, it doesn't even bother me. I wanna take care of people that's paying taxes.
The city's the homeowner.
We got a motion on the floor, we got a second.
Just to be clear on the motion, the motion is to rule based on our attorney's opinion on one from the email that he sent us, that we do in fact have the option to consider the house inhabitable, unsafe, a nuisance to the surrounding areas and to the city of St. Joe, and to hereby condemn the property.
All right, that's the motion. You're certain you still stand?
Yes.
All right. Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries 4-0.
The house is condemned. At this point, the house is condemned. No occupancy whatsoever. Any occupancy from this point forward will be unlawful.
Right. Nobody can move in there.
Commissioner Lowery?
Yes.
Just to be clear, I did present that as an option, but not an option that I recommended to make sure that, Commissioner Hoffman made a statement that I made a recommendation as to that option. I said that was an option that the city could take, but not necessarily the option I was recommending. Obviously, the board has the responsibility to take whatever option they believe is in the best interest of the city. I just want to make sure that what I said was clear.
Yeah, I apologize for not reading that part of the option, but if you are correct, it was an option that was not supported by the city attorney.
Commissioner Hoffman, I do contradict you or create a problem or anything, I just want to make sure what I said was clear.
No, no, you're, it's fair to say that.
And I agree with Commissioner Langston, if we gotta fight somebody, I'd rather fight to honor that house than to fight you people. So you people voted me in here, I'm pretty sure, I look around the crowd, I could say I got votes from most everybody sitting here. The last time I had to run, which was actually four years ago, the last year I didn't have any opposition. But we're here for you, and I'm not gonna fight you over this issue, I'm gonna fight whoever owns that house. I guarantee you that. All right?
So what does the demolition look like?
I guess the staff understand what they need to do.
Next question was, from what I gather today, what we need to do is we need to go post the property, secure the property, is what I hear the wish the board today, and then what I'll do from there is give a call to County Administrator Michael Hammond, which I'd figure out the demo portion from there. But from my understanding, what we need to do today, Stan, there's nobody in the house now, is there anybody?
There's nobody coming and going.
Is somebody coming and going?
Everything's coming and going.
And they moved furniture and stuff in there.
Yeah, the key is to, if someone is in the home, get them out. And then the second part of that is to make sure it's clear that no one is allowed inside the premises of the house.
They're not living there. They're not, it's empty right now. Me and the animal control officer was there earlier today looking for that dog. There's nobody there now. There's nobody there at night. They're just coming and going, just more vagrants just waiting to take an opportunity. It's like an ant bed, when some leaves, there's some coming in. It's just constant traffic coming in, and it's the same go, fill, nastiness, the same. I mean, it's trash or off trash.
Well, I think the key to this whole meeting is to get to where we're on the same team. And I think we're moving in that direction now. So we'll get it done.
We'll get it posted today, and we'll work on the demo for it.
Who is gonna be responsible? We're looking at the taxes over town, trying to land the city.
Commissioner Lowery?
How far are they behind?
We'll find out that out.
Yeah. I just don't want to sit down there and something like that.
Hey, Attorney? Yes, sir.
The memo dated, I believe, November 30th, I'll check that, memo dated, yes, November 30, 2018, provides guidance within the nuisance ordinance that we have that Commissioner Hoffman referenced at the beginning of the meeting, so that memo, which was sent out recent again to all commissioners and Mr. Anderson, if that's referenced, that'll lay out the path to handle this in a manner that the board has voted today, along with coordinating with the county, et cetera.
All right. Any other discussion by the board on anything? We already voted on that, it's a done deal, it's forward. Mr. Attorney? Well, I got one thing I wanna bring up, and just so quickly, is the sidewalks on Langston Drive. At some point in time, Jim, I would love, and I don't wanna go through the Chamber of Commerce, I'd like it to be a city function, is to have some type of ribbon-cutting ceremony over there. It's named after Commissioner Langston's father. And we just need to have a ribbon-cutting, I think, we finally got it after about five or six years. So we can set something up, once they get through with all the grain that they're laying and all, maybe we can do something like that. All right. Got a motion, Mr. Attorney? The move, second? Set a move. All right.